Is the council expecting to vote on this?
No.
No.
Cause I've read a briefing.
Well, I've read it once, but I gotta read all of the math to go through when I'm reading legal documents.
There will be a test. I failed the quiz. No, you passed.
Was there any trip hazards at the construction site?
Any what?
Trip hazards? That you found or saw?
One I did.
Did you?
I just stepped left when I should've stepped right.
Yeah, I was there.
I don't think I thanked you for pulling me out of the drink.
Well, I think there was other people there had a hand on you too.
Brent was there.
Yes.
I was so aggravated with myself that I forgot to thank you.
That area, no, I think you did. That area is, when you're walking in that deep grass, you have just no idea where you're stepping.
Or what's in there.
Or what's in there. I went into a hole early in the morning with Scotty. Scotty was at the top of the hill laughing. It was dark still, but I was walking there and all of a sudden I was knee deep in water. He said, well, your shoes aren't wet, are you? No, I don't know if they're wet on the outside, but the water's flowing down my leg. It's wicking fairly well into there.
And to wash my shoes and my trousers, shorts.
Well, you're lucky.
Yeah. At least I didn't disappear to the center of the earth.
That was, that was an unkind spot. And you must think about it. I was there till four o'clock with that guy, but the owner was there the whole day. Derek.
Did you say?
Because his crew, he had crews out. It was him and his son who were there, taking care of the problem that existed still. And at four o'clock, when he was finishing the last little bit, he was starting to get a little dizzy.
Really?
And I asked him, you know, you had enough water or you had too much water, whatever it is. You can only tolerate 100 degrees for so long.
You're in the heat.
And I told him, I says, you know, you're not my age, but you're not a kid. You've been working hard here all day.
We got lucky to get the right company to do that.
I don't know, they were, they were there and working the whole time, so you can't ask for more, you know, so. Are we on for sound? Good evening, everybody. I think we'll start the meeting here on July 27th. It's about 7:02. So, welcome. Thank you all for coming. Guests tonight? Marge?
Yes.
Okay. Marge Womack?
And do you know Stan?
And Stan? Haven't got to him yet, but.
Chris is here.
And Chris. I'm trying to get my agenda out. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Rule call. Council position number one, Joe Armon.
Aye.
David Budrias, position number two.
David Budrias is present?
Budrias, sorry.
That's okay, just for the record.
Yeah, I know, it's.
I'm present.
Stephen Hardy, position number three.
Present.
Present. Position number four, Peter Davenport.
Present.
And our position number five is not here at the present, Levi Shank. We already recognized you visitors right off the bat, so we're not gonna do it again. Any public comments that pertain to the agenda?
Maybe not to the agenda, but before we get into it, I want to thank you guys for doing all the work that you did to get water back to us so quickly.
Uh huh.
Really appreciate it.
I couldn't agree with you more. Having spent the last four or five days on that and every single one of these guys was there at one point in time.
Thank you.
And our contractor did a fine job, even though it may have failed twice in the beginning. This thing started on the first of July approximately. It's been that long that it started out with water along the ground.
And nobody said anything?
Oh yeah, we do. I was down there talking to sockets and then the next week we started digging and proceeded to sink our backhoe three times in the area that I now refer to as Three Lakes Construction Site. Two of them are now dry. And as of last Saturday, the pipe was cut off and the railroad was removed from this equation. At least for the present time, we have no more water or degradation of the railroad grade as of last Saturday. And as of Monday at 4:00 or 4:00 PM, the water's been on for over 48 hours now with no problem. So, I'm gonna hope and pray that our Band-Aid fix works until we can get another pipe underneath the railroad.
Well, again, good job.
Yeah, it went well. Now we're getting back on. I agree.
Your honor, just one small, in acknowledging the presence of visitors, I think you overlooked Stan Roth.
No, no, we got Stan.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I missed it.
Uh, any additions to the agenda?
I just would like to bring up discussion of creating our council creative ordinance regarding the recycle bin and the green waste bin. Something with rules briefly and with penalties for viol- violators if we move forward with that program.
Good evening, Levi.
Good evening. Hey, Peter. David?
Any other additions to the agenda?
What was the first one again?
Yes, sir. I put in, create a council creative ordinance, a guideline ordinance for recycling bins and the green waste bins, a usage agreement with penalties if maybe for violators since we're having some issues there.
And having been through the ordeal we have in the past couple of weeks here, I'd like to see us think of some way, and we don't need to come up with this tonight, hopefully by maybe next council meeting on the 10th, but some way to disseminate accurate information to the city, to everybody. Not everybody has a cellphone, not everybody has a computer, not everybody leaves their house on a regular basis and gets down to our reader boards. I don't have an answer for what the best way is. We utilize the school and many things, but we need to come up with a better way to disseminate accurate information. I can tell you, sitting here for the past couple of days after getting this water system going up, this man has been an answering service for probably 60% of his day, saying, yes, it's okay to water your lawn, yes, the water's on. And that may not seem like much, but every time he tried to do something, the phone rang and that's what I heard. Yes, the water's on. So.
You looking for some kind of a short term or emergency type thing?
Well, I think just in general.
I was gonna bring it up eventually. I didn't think tonight there would be enough room on the agenda, but I do believe we need to have an emergency and a safety plan updated if we even, if the city even has one. I know we've got a couple ones over here for the county, but I don't know if the city has one.
Yeah, that was, that was a glaring issue.
Including now, how do we communicate, so.
Yeah. I don't know what that would be. Doesn't have to be solved tonight, but.
Well, the rumor mill runs really fast.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
It's gonna get going as good as that.
It ran down just about as fast as water down Main Street.
That's why I put in my word dissemination of accurate information.
Well, it's accurate information that you wanna disseminate, right?
Let's just put it on the agenda.
Yes.
I'll keep quiet now.
Okay, moving on. Approval of the July 15th payroll. Would someone like to entertain a motion?
Does it know that I'm on the right page in the payroll here? Got it.
Okay.
Um, I will motion to approve the payroll register.
I'll second.
So, it's been moved and seconded that we accept the payroll as written. Further discussion?
One question, uh, 506, the payment to Marge Womack, is that just the squaring up of that discrepancy regarding?
Is that a claim? I guess I'm not on the same page. I think the first one is.
Oh, we're on partial, sorry.
We're on, yeah, the first page is only two of them, which is Troy and Jerry. And we can continue to that second page, sure. And what was the number, Stephen?
506.
And that check has not been gone out. That one was never signed by me. That's still pending.
So, line 506 is not valid on here?
That's correct. That is, that is correct. That, that check should be taken out of the, off the page here is what it should be.
I move an amendment.
The second.
Well, actually, we'll talk about that later. Cause that, that check is on there cause it's been printed.
It's been printed, never been signed.
Right, but it cannot be voided now because it's printed. So, it will be added to the remainder. There'll be two checks at the time.
So, that one and an additional one on Monday.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, there'll be two checks for that.
Question about Elizabeth Troy. What's her official title?
Elizabeth?
Well.
She is the cleaner of the restrooms at the park and the town square, City Hall, vacuums in here, and also works as the cook for.
Senior meals.
Senior meals and as an assistant to Troy at some times when we need a second set of eyes on the job. So, she has a lot of titles.
That's the reason I asked. She was setting road signs on one of our openings.
Yeah, that could've been, yeah, at one of the events recently.
Two or three days ago.
Hmm, okay. Around a hole that was being dug or?
Yeah, it had been dug.
Yeah, like at Sherry's place or somewhere?
I've forgotten the address.
Yeah, she would've been working with Troy in that afternoon. So, if we go back, did that answer your question, Stephen? It's a little cryptic.
Should it still be considered struck or?
Well, I would say no. It sounds to me like that, I know when that check came out, I was, I had some doubts on where we were going with it, so I didn't wanna sign it at the time. So, it, I thought at that point it was dead.
Well, it hasn't gone out, but since it had been printed, I went back in and tried to void it and it wouldn't allow me to void it.
Okay.
So, I'm gonna have to do two checks and that will be one of them.
So, it's a part of the whole, the final amount is larger than?
Correct.
Okay, I withdraw my amendment.
Okay. Any further discussion? No?
Full of questions.
All in favor of accepting the motion to approve the payroll as stated? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Oppose, say the same? Very good. Next on the agenda is to approve the claims.
I move the check register to be accepted as presented.
Second.
So, it's been moved by Peter Davenport, seconded by Levi to accept the check register as noted. Any further discussion?
What's a hazardous waste generation fee?
Department of Ecology number 614?
614?
Yeah.
Can anybody tell me why we pay $60 to the Department of Ecology?
I signed that check and it seems to me it was under wastewater treatment that that check was charged to.
I think so. I'm not 100% sure why we out that fee.
That might be a permit fee? That's a question, not a statement.
Good, right. Is there a way to pull some information on that quickly or?
I can call Ecology tomorrow and send out a follow-up B R.
Okay.
Thank you, Jerry.
Another question.
Sure.
The Avisa bill, electrical bill, item 615, check 615, does that include the charge for pumping water?
Yes. For, from our pumps, you're talking about the wells?
Yes.
Yes, if you break that down, our 40 horsepower one charges us around $500 a month. That's the big one over here behind the bank. That's what it takes to run the big pump.
There may be some charges next month as well on that. Because they sent the bill out about the time we started. Say again, Jerry, please? That, um, there may be additional charges from Avisa next month because they send the bill out just about the time we started all that water correction stuff. So, we may see a high bill next month as well.
Line 585, ABC forms paper for claims.
That's the three-part paper that we send out, um, the bill's on.
Oh.
Yeah, we were, we were out of that, so I had to order more.
Okay, assuming that's a lot of those pages?
I think I got, I think it was like 5,000 pages, something.
The, uh, number 570, uh, $1,000, Town Square gravel, was that part of the, the funds that we've already obtained and are disbursed now?
That's part of the NOVY grant.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Seems to me several times I've been asked what the cardboard dumpster is, but it looks like the cardboard dumpster in the disposal bin was 220, 30 last month. Just for that one.
That's just the cardboard?
What's the check number?
Just the cardboard.
588 is the transaction number.
Yes.
How many times was that? Just once?
Oh no, that's probably at least twice.
Okay.
Could've been, could've been three times, but I know at least twice.
Yeah, they don't put that on the bill. They just put that brief description and a price.
It and green waste, we've been averaging about two weeks during the last month or so here. Okay, any further discussion?
Call a question?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to pay the claims as stated. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, same? Okay, very good. The next item on the agenda, I think we are gonna postpone to another meeting due to the fact that there was some information that came up about that that was probably.
Minutes.
That we have minutes, Jeff. We have to do the minutes.
Oh, sorry about that.
Nobody, we can postpone those too.
Good. Okay, let's look at the minutes for, uh, July 13th, which was pretty quick. I was thinking that wasn't minutes, that was.
Jerry, I don't see the 13th as a part of a recent pack. The last I have is on, sent from you as a draft on 15th. Has it changed since then?
It should be the 21st.
Well, that's a different meeting. The 21st was a special meeting to declare an emergency. The 13th would be our last regular meeting.
I don't have it either.
It's a July 15th that we're talking about here?
An email on 15th, yeah. It, it is in our email as a draft. I just don't know if it's changed since then.
Okay, well, I confess, I didn't know what I even saw. When was it mailed out, do you know?
July 15th.
Yeah, it's the 15th of July.
He's some kind of almost media?
Yeah, July 13th.
9:23 AM, has draft in the title.
There it is.
It looks fine to me.
It looks good to me.
I thought I had copies of everything here.
Would you like to see it?
No, I looked at it all today and it was. And it's probably the upside down one in my file here I turned over last month, so Thursday, the 21st. I had the special meeting in there too for the 13th. Or excuse me, I wanted the 13th, I was a 25th, 24th. Been a busy month.
I'd say so.
Very busy month. He's waiting on our copier. Our copier works under COVID rules and it's working from home, so it takes a while for it to get back to us.
Is that sarcasm, Jeff?
No.
If it is, it's greatly appreciated, just so you know.
Do we have final minutes for the 13th of July?
Printing them right now.
That's what he's preparing.
Yes. Everything was printed ahead of time. We thought we had copies of everything here today.
I didn't understand why it was stapling.
Well, did you get us that? You were, if you did, you're the only one, Peter.
No, I don't think I did. Now, this was, it was mailed out.
July 15th?
The 15th of July, yes. And it says July 13th, 2022, council minutes, council minutes draft. It was, uh.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
Very good.
Treasurer report. Oppose, we change the spelling to treasurer report.
So, I don't believe we have a motion on the floor yet to approve the minutes of this meeting.
And make a motion.
Okay.
Approve, it was written. With it, take that back. A motion to approve with the correction of treasurer.
Okay.
I'll second.
So, it's been moved and seconded to approve as amended. Any further discussion?
Uh, yes, I did spot one amendment, any, or one correction. Bottom of the first page, resolution 235, 2, uh, 2022. Uh, I don't know who seconded it, but Stephen actually made a motion to adopt. I don't know who seconded, but it was approve 5.0, just the minutes don't reflect that.
I don't remember who seconded. I have a suspicion. We'd have to listen to the tape to confirm.
He was, the motion was made by who, Joe?
Stephen, Stephen has corrected. There was a, there was a typo in the percentage amount in there that we got corrected.
Mm-hmm.
Ah, so we're gonna scratch the hundred percent.
Wasn't it fifty percent?
That whole line is, could be, oh no, that's like one point eight million for the whole thing. This is for overruns of the construction.
Question.
Yep.
Top of the second page, nuisance ordinance.
Is that a, that's a totally separate issue here? We're talking about ordinance number XXX?
The, the bottom of the, bottom of the first page is, we haven't left that yet, Peter.
And we're still approving the minutes for July thirteenth.
He was asking about, he was asking about the next page.
The next page.
Okay.
Nuisance ordinance.
Yep, okay.
Said that the council agreed with the recommendation. Did we vote on it?
No.
I don't think everything to approve. We have voted on the fact that we were gonna move forward and talk to the lawyer. That was kinda resurrected from the past.
Okay.
Rewriting of the nuisance ordinance. Yes, that has been done. We've sent a draft to attorney.
Mm-hmm.
Which is the one you have that.
So are you forming a memo there, Joe?
I hadn't, but I certainly can.
Follow the question? We have the motion on the floor.
Motion and seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, but then we are talking about correcting the bottom of the first page, resolution two thirty-five, twenty twenty-two. They're trying to put together an amendment to that right now, Peter.
It was a resolution that we did vote on.
It's what?
It, it was a resolution that we did vote on.
Yes.
Um, I just can't rem- I didn't write down who seconded that resolution. But I know we voted on it five oh.
So it was moved and ex- to accept by Stephen, seconded by Levi.
He's, he's got it.
With the changes to enter, the changes to, to five, to point zero five percent.
To, cause I put point zero five and we corrected it to point five, so.
Yeah. I guess if I looked at my notes, I could have had that for you.
So that's a motion to amend minutes? Okay. And I can add within a motion to approve?
You can, they just have to accept it as a friendly amendment.
So I make a motion to correct the bottom of the first page, resolution two thirty-five twenty-two, by adding Stephen motion to accept with the correction of the interest rate from point zero five to point five percent. Levi seconded, approved five zero.
I'll second that motion.
Are we gonna get rid of that?
I don't know where that comes from, that's, which covers, that's talking about, um-
The last, the very last sentence, last- Where it says this grant we have received, which covers one hundred percent of the project.
Yeah.
I don't know that, that's not a true statement. I guess it could be used on any part, but it does not cover it, it's a-
So who made the original motion to accept the?
I did.
Yeah, so David, you, you adopted, you accept that as a friendly amendment then?
Accepted amendment.
Good, we're good then.
So it's been moved and seconded that we accept resolution twenty-two, two thirty-five, twenty twenty-two, with the amendments just read by Joe Armond regarding the percentage rate. And, uh-
Correction to the minutes.
And the correction to the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Say the same? Okay. Okay.
No matter, we have to approve the minutes as a whole.
Peter had a question about the nuisance ordinance, too bad.
Oh, let's go back then.
Did you have a question about the nuisance ordinance, Peter?
We answered already, but.
Uh, let me-
Your, your question was the top of the second page, the nuisance ordinance, and we were resurrecting that from the past dealings with our former city lawyer and passing it on a copy to-
My only question was how the council agreed. We didn't vote. Who measures whether the council agrees?
I believe it was just a general consensus, wasn't it?
Yeah.
There's a discussion.
Yeah, it was just in discussion, it wasn't actually brought to a vote.
Mm-hmm.
Well, accepted if no other council member questions it.
Okay, moving on. The next subject was, under here was water and sewer.
We did. Okay, sorry, I got lost right there.
Yeah.
Not the one I was-
Going to do the July twenty-first minutes?
The special meeting?
For handing back, comes later.
I don't see that on here, actually, but-
Hold it till the next meeting if you want it to-
For the, the special meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was-
So we're gonna add that to the agenda then.
We, we don't have to, if, I mean, we could approve it at our next meeting too. I just, I guess it was a question for me, I was confused as to why they were going out, um, but we could do it next meeting.
I think this is probably a great time. If, I think we all have a copy of that, maybe not?
It is in the packet.
I see no problem with that, that's a great idea. Stephen, let's get that done right now. So the next li- item, item which is not on the agenda and we're gonna squeeze it in, is to approve the special city council meeting that was held on the twenty-first at twelve thirty-five PM. If somebody'd like to make a motion to that.
Move to accept.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Levi, seconded by Stephen, that we move and accept the minutes from the July twenty-first city council meeting, special meeting. Have any further discussion?
Not on the minutes as such, but we probably sh- has anyone looked into when we're supposed to end our state of emergency?
That's a good question. That's something I asked about the other day and didn't get a, a very good answer, but I will look more into that tomorrow.
I'm guessing it wouldn't be until we have a new permanent solution, cause we could have a failure at any point.
That's correct. Until the, till we have a finished pipe in and the whole job is done, as far as I'm concerned, we're not done.
Right.
But I was still asked that same question, whether this- And the reason we started this with, began with, was to open the door, to go a lot of different directions for funding and help from the state. So I'm gonna look into that more too, your question there. So it's been moved and seconded to accept the minutes from the July twenty-first meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Wonderful. Okay, now we're gonna move on to the water and sewer, which I think we're going to scratch from the the agenda tonight because the topic has been made unclear from some of the people we were talking with. So we need to pursue that issue offline before we're ready to bring it to the floor. So if we move on to the next, is the nuisance ordinance, which everybody should have a copy of. That was given to our new city attorney last Thursday, maybe?
Yeah, something like that.
Thursday or Friday, Dave and I had a conversation with him and then he marched forward to put some of the information from the past and the present and some of his own ideas into this and so now it's open for discussion. Well, I'm- And I think there's many things to discuss about it. This may not get ironed out tonight.
I think structurally, and as mentioned before, there's, there's some inconsistencies in here that need to be cleaned up. That's just bits and pieces. I think the context of what is being asked, what is beaten, changed as an ordinance, I think, is the discussion, if I'm, if I'm correct. The items that are being discussed.
Well, I know the brief time that David and I looked at tonight, we found several items that I'm not sure what the council wants to move forward with, but several items that were not quite consistent with what our plan was. Your feeling on that, David?
I would concur with that. There's only a couple of questions I have, and they would be for the attorney. The whole idea behind this, what I was getting from the council and others, code enforcement officer to be more example, is they wanted more teeth to the ordinance. And they wanted to be able, instead of just writing notices and then go on the wayside, even though some, majority of the people would comply with them, there's an element that did not, whether they refused willingly or couldn't, or for whatever reason. Yeah, I'm of the opinion with this, I agree with a lot of it, but my que- what, main question I have, what exactly can our CEO, and that's code enforcement officer, or whomever the mayor designates to fill that position? What are his parameters to do? If it's strictly just handing out a notice and then leave it from there, we're back to square one again. We're not gonna move forward with compliance, a hundred percent compliance. And it would be my recommendation to, um, well, I need clarification, or we need clarification from the attorney, cause he references in there, uh, law enforcement, city police and contracted law enforcement. Now, I mentioned that when we sent this to him, our situation, he's aware of that, but however, the laws in the state have changed and are always changing. So I think he kept that in mind, but I need, I would like the city to get clarification on who, what exactly the code enforc- the officer will do, can he do? He's just merely walking around identifying that and then we call our contracted law enforcement. How willing are they gonna be able to be in following this up? I personally don't think they're gonna spend a lot of time doing that personally. So I welcome your guys' thoughts. How do you guys read it? Is that any concern to the fellow council members here, or just, um, that's the biggie? And when it comes to, there's an exception in here. Was it nuisance? Cause this is a nuisance ordinance and there's a, a list of everything that he has stated written in here.
Section, section four?
What's that?
Section four?
Yes.
Okay.
It constitutes a nuisance, and whether it be noise, animals, um, refrigerators, you know, appliances, rubbish, a lot of like contracting, you know, remodeling supplies, you know, kinda your generic stuff. And even weeds, trees, shrubs and, and all that. And the exception is drunk cars or vehicles. And I don't see where our code enforcement person, officer, has any much real teeth when it comes to that. It looks like there, you have to go through law enforcement. And I, I just want him, the attorney, to clarify, is that really what he means, or is that really tying our hands to just a dog chaser, or I mean, what, what, what are the parameters? So I'll leave it to you guys. If you see anything that stands out to you, you know, like Councilman Joe mentioned earlier, there are a few things, um, verbiage in here and, and different things that need to be either put in a different spot or cleaned up, or, you know, minor stuff. And also, I'll just open up the can of worms here with the, uh, one of the things that, when I said constitutes an emergen- or a nuisance, emergency, a nuisance, cargo containers are listed, more than one, railroad car, semi truck trailer, and other similar storage container on private property. And that's gonna be something we have to come to an agreement on rather shortly, cause there's already citizens that are concerned about stuff that has already gone up and going to go up. And how do we handle that? So I guess we need to hear from all the council here and maybe later, later in public comment. Don't be afraid to say something, cause that's what they're here for, is we wanna listen to you, you folks. And with that said, I'll, I'll yield and listen to you guys. Question? Was this composed by an attorney?
Yes.
From the three documents we saw?
Yes.
The last meeting?
Do you believe that maybe there was a paragraph left off here?
It may as well, it kinda almost looks like that.
That would be fourteen, is it?
Yeah, Roman numeral fourteen.
And unauthorized vehicle period, then it is gosh.
Yeah, I thi- I think, I think he left something out there.
Yeah.
And I think, didn't he mention that this was kind of, did he, or did I'm jumping ahead here? He wanted us to look at this, it was just kinda like a shot out of the corral, we'll look at and pick it apart?
When you and I were sitting there, he said, we went over a couple scenarios. Number one, that we were- Number one, that we work only with what you had add. And he corrected it. Number two, maybe he took yours and some of his and something else and put it all together with what he thought was the best legal and I don't exactly remember the third option that we gave him. There was a lot going on there in that discussion.
But we wanted-
But this was basically a rough draft.
Correct. And, and the whole goal was to clean it up to one document instead of having multiple documents everywhere.
Go ahead, Joe. So, I mean, we could pound on this all night long and I think everyone wants to be here that long, but I think when he just says that one line in your definitions, number D right here, is what an unauthorized vehicle is.
Oh, and you think that came spit out somewhere else too?
Yeah.
Could be right. So that's just another repeat of this.
Well, this, okay, so section three is just simply definitions of these specific words. So if the word nuisance comes up, this is what it means.
Yeah.
Unauthorized vehicle, that whole paragraph is what it means. We do the same thing in insurance policies, the only difference is we highlight any word that has a specific definition.
A little food for thought that has nothing to do with this document, but we have at least one new container in town. In downtown here.
Mm-hmm. So where I do appreciate a set, well, more than one cargo container implies that somebody can have one.
That's the one. That one just reached out off the page to me.
Okay.
When the problem didn't start until more than one, I think is what it said.
Well, okay.
More than one cargo container.
Right, so that implies that you can have one.
Then one's okay.
One's okay.
Yeah.
So everyone-
But then read the next paragraph.
Yeah, I, I did read. If, you have to read all the way down to that, that has not been modified.
Right, correct, yeah.
So I can get a cargo container, put siding on it and windows and turn it into a, a man cave and make it aesthetically appealing to the neighborhood and that's okay.
Correct. However, I would suggest, I know we have a existing outdated, but existing ordinance regarding building codes setbacks, all that kind of fun stuff, that we look at that and I, I believe it was eighty, eighties or maybe early nineties, before these cargo containers were even really thought of.
A thing.
You know, yeah, so it could go into that. I don't know if it needs to be in the nuisance part of this or if we just make that inclusive. I, I mean, I don't know which, that's something to decide and, and ask. Input from the citizens and the attorney and what they've-
You spent a lot of time yourself working on this over the winter.
I did.
Was there anybody else? Was there a committee or only you?
Only me.
So I don't know. Would you like to be, to head this up with the help of someone else and keep following on through with this?
You could if, I guess.
I know you're approaching your busy season, but-
Well, the, the big thing is, is sit down with an attorney so we get an answer instead of, the, the hard part is what we come up with because frankly, a lot of stuff, I, I go back to a first opening statement that four sixty-two is our original document and it was dealt strictly with junk vehicles. And the problem with it was there was no, no penalties, teeth to it or whatever, no claws, whatever you wanna call it. And so the only thing I did to it was plagiarized Wilbur's, Town of Wilbur's ordinance regarding junk vehicles. And that was recommended by the district court clerk, Renee Honey. And her advice was that it, Town of Wilbur's was one of the best ones that the, in the county at that, at that time, a year ago, that the courts will recognize. And so therefore, or therefore, that verbiage or that language went in there and that's the only thing that changed for the most part. With the exception, I should add, there is my, there, take that back. After having an attorney look at it, a prior attorney, he said that this conflict, that it is in conflict with three eighty-nine, I believe it was, another ordinance.
Like three of them.
Yeah, which I had no idea existed, so I had to go to look and dig that up. How he had it, I don't know, but there was quite a few years span between the two. One, I think four sixty-two is a two thousand and eight and I think three eighty-nine is a, again, eighty-nine or ninety-four, somewhere in there, quite a bit older. And so there's a conflict with them. So as his recommendation, he'd say, he'd give me like three different scenarios, or three recommendations to do. He said the easiest probably would be just to eliminate the language that was added in four sixty-two, which I did, and leave the other alone and some minor tweaking here and there, so which I did, um, on both ordinances. Because a lot of thing, a lot of ground was, his explanation was, there's a lot of ground covered in three eighty-nine and four sixty-two. It was redundant and he had a problem with that for whatever reason. So that's why, one of the recommendations was just to throw them both away and make one. So that's kind of where we were. I, why I recommended, we just have an attorney do this, look at it, what'll fly and what won't and current, up to date and take the best of all three or four, two, whatever world and come up with one. But the goal was, is for our code enforcement officer, which is not a law enforcement officer running stretch, has the ability, the teeth to, to pursue when they need to. And I guess that, that was the goal. And eventually, yes, I think, no matter what you have here, eventually, push come to shove, you will need a, a law enforcement officer in cer- in certain circumstances to deal with certain things.
I'm alarmed by giving all this authority to one person. But I see some verbiage here that concerns me. In the existing nuisance vehicle ordinance, as I recall, definition of a nuisance ordinance or a nuisance vehicle is one that triggers three out of five criteria.
It's still there.
On page two, under definitions, says unauthorized vehicle. Any vehicle substantially meeting any of the following criteria. What does substantially mean? Could be argued that triggering one of these criteria is a substantial.
I haven't seen a substantial yet. What, page two or?
Page two where?
Page two of eight, under definitions. D, delta?
Okay, so it's, it's section three definitions.
Okay, yeah, it's page two and then-
Under D?
D is in delta, unauthorized vehicle, it says. Any vehicle is substantially meeting any of the following criteria.
How do we define substantially?
That was a lawyer that wrote that, Peter.
Well, I know any vehicle that's parked on the city right of is what have you, that follows under an RCW that's probably referred to in here.
Okay, there, there's, I don't mean to interrupt you, but there is a difference between private property and public property, which we city, here or state. There's what you can do. I believe if it's on, public property, it's almost immediate. You can darn near get rid of it or have it towed.
Indeed, it's talking about unauthorized vehicle, of which a junk vehicle is an unauthorized vehicle. The preceding section defines junk vehicle and retains the meaning at least three of the following requirements.
Right. Did you hear that, Peter?
Where is that?
The previous section, junk vehicle definition.
So C is in Charlie.
I'm just hesitant to give all this authority to one person.
Towards the bottom of the document, and we'll clean it up, but they're given the authority to write a script or summons or citation or whatever. That's the extent of their authority. They don't have any authority to act further than that. It's actually towards the end of this document, it falls on the city council to actually take action.
After the person receives a script, then they have thirty days in which time to-
All of these things.
Come back and meet with the city and contest any of these.
How many violators do we have in town?
Probably a dozen I can think of.
Yeah.
And I think in the past, it's just without the serious scoff laws or whatever you call them, most people comply. And it's, and the code enforcement officer basically served is just a, a person reminding people about the situation. And a lot of them did comply, from what I'm hearing out of. It's just those that did not and turned their blind eye to it and, and thumb their nose, desperately frustrated the code enforcement person officer. That was the number one thing. They said, why am I doing this when all it is, nothing gets done. People won't listen to them. Am I?
That's, that's pretty true. I, I wrote ten letters during my term there and eight of them were solved with the people complying basically to what we asked. From removing cars, a couple of refrigerators, to cutting down grass that was four feet high due to fire hazards.
Mm-hmm.
And there was only a couple, two of them that I remember, we had no resolution. And the mayor at that time didn't want to push it to the next level, which was substantial cash outweigh on the city's part.
So I will, to tie into that comment and, and the whole purpose behind this, I mean, there's pieces of this that I like, there's pieces of this that I don't like. We can hammer those out later, but I don't know if it's part of this or part of the next part, but when all these things and somebody just doesn't, ignores everything and fines or levying and what have you and this goes along with water bills that are not being paid and vacant properties that are not meeting their, their match. This may not be the document, I don't wanna throw out, we need to, as a city, reinforce these actions with liens, which is about the only thing that I can think of.
That's what they are.
But I know that we've been shying away from that because of the cost and I just don't think we can do that anymore.
So your concern, Peter, was?
My concern as a general in giving more authority to the city government when the problem could be solved in other, through other means.
Well, I guess hypothetically, I guess I would need to, I would, I do agree with you. With this, most people, keep in mind, ninety percent probably do comply with this and it's just straight up, either we do or we don't. We take this document and shred it or, and just everybody, every man, woman and child for himself and forget everything. Or is it important for people in this town to have things and look nice if it is? That's why I welcome and beg public input at these meetings. So I mean, because this, we're for them, we're for the public. This isn't my, my dig or my, my pet project. Or should it be anybody here on the council? We serve the, the community. And if the community has issues with this, we address them and come up with the best solution and-
I guess I'm uncomfortable with the general catchall nature of the proposed document. It addresses too many subjects. I'd prefer to see them separated into individual ordinances. For example, does a defective roof constitute a nuisance or peeling paint?
I don't believe so. That's, did you see that in here?
Well, what, pardon?
Did you see that in there?
No, I didn't.
No, I didn't either.
I cited only as an example of things that could be included under the general catchall definition of a nuisance. Weeds are, if weeds are a nuisance, why isn't peeling paint a nuisance?
Paint's not a fire hazard.
Pardon?
Paint isn't a fire hazard.
For the most part.
I thought they were pretty well a finite area. They've, there's a lot in here, but I mean, he's got down to cans and bottles and dog poop and-
Litter, rubbish.
Rubbish and piles of lumber. Only, I think they picked a lot of the things that you could go walk around town and find. You know, abandoned furniture in your front yard, trucks with a barbecue in the back and baby cribs and no wheels or windshield. You know, so he's pretty well got the junk cars and everything else in this. He didn't say anything about weeds or peeling paint.
I understand that.
It, it was broad but concise to the point too.
Just I'm uncomfortable in giving all this authority to the city and to its code enforcement officer.
So for my two cents, I think the whole council is aware of my ideological considerations with the nuisance ordinance, but to put that aside for a second, if I didn't have those concerns, the extent of the things listed in here, I think to Joe's point about we can't afford to not enforce it anymore. If it weren't for the ideological consideration, my vote would depend on how would a person go about funding such a heightened level of awareness to our nuisances? Because this will represent a large amount of time investment. So I'd be curious to know how, what are the intentions of, does this become, I mean, is the CEO supposed to be doing all of this? Do we fund them for that mu- much amount of time? Practically will it rest on the mayor? I don't think he has the, the bandwidth to be doing that. I don't think that you're going to find, I mean, you could find a CEO that's going to be generous to give the time needed to enforce all these things for the amount of money we pay, but they will be very generous to do so. And if we enforce part of it, I mean, if we let someone grow poison ivy and have some glass on, and cans on their property, but we go after one other portion of it, then it's enforced unequally. So I mean, I, I think it, it has merit, but with the extent of what's listed, I, I'm not saying that we can't fund it. There's the, we could work around budgets to fund it. But my question to those that are advocating for it would be that, recognize that to, to actually put this on the books and enforce it correctly, it's going to be an expensive proposition and, and so I, I think it would have to be married with how are we going to fund these mandates?
Another related question is whether the city is going to hold itself to the same standard that it's gonna hold the citizens to. We have fields that are choked with weeds and the argument is, well, we don't have the manpower to cut those weeds.
Very true.
City employees are doing other things. Couldn't the citizen raise the same argument?
Absolutely.
I, you bring up very good points, but just to add to this here. My knowledge of the situation, I don't think, now Jess, you're gonna have to chime in here. Did you write notices about a lot of weeds and stuff or what was the main concern? It was junk and, and vehicles and, and of that nature. It wasn't picking apart?
I could pull them up and show them. I don't have my computer with me, but a good share of them were people- a good share of them were people who parked cars that were blocking sidewalks.
Alley's.
And sidewalks. Their boats and their cars that they had were absolutely, you couldn't walk down without walking out of the street, and the sidewalks were put in for pedestrian traffic. Not for you to park your fifty-six Ford on, and I like fifty-six Fords. So let's not get into that part of it, but other ones were cars that were not rolling drivable vehicles, cars that where the front end was gone, that were setting in full view of our main street here. And a couple of them still are. Those were the ones that wouldn't.
Leaking oil.
Yeah, we talked about trucks, we, and several of these people begrudgingly moved their cars to their own property. Like I said, begrudgingly, they weren't happy about it. But they complied because they felt that was what the rest of their fellow citizens expected from them. So, as a civil group of people here, we've decided we want to live this way. And if you want to collect cars or collect boats or trailers or whatever, then you probably don't want to live right in the city limits. Because the city limits wants to try to have a different culture. So I'm not trying to, it, it doesn't matter what we think individually, it's what we think as a group. So, it was a situation that we tactfully went about, and the fire hazards were not a problem. Because we wrote a letter that said, you know, either you're gonna cut this down or we're gonna have it done. You have a fire hazard here, and we're going to bill you for man-hours. So most of them called somebody they knew here, and up showed a tractor who cut all this stuff down.
I'd like to add just one thing to that, is we don't want it to look like Thorrefrea. When was the last time you went to Spokane, that camp hope?
You, you mean a tent city?
The tent city is over six hundred residents in that, that area.
One and a half Harrington.
Yes.
So, it was, it was people trying to just clean up the town a little bit. As I told you here a week ago, I don't want to tell somebody to drive down Third Avenue till you see the old couch and the stack of furniture that's sitting there across from the post office, and then turn left and go up to where you see the fifty-six Ford with no windshield and missing two fenders. At that street, turn right, and you'll come down to the house that's half burned down. I'd rather use addresses and other than piles of debris to describe how to get around our town. I mean, our town's starting to clean up in ways. And if we don't pursue that, it could, because of the cost of property around here, it could become more uninhabited dwellings. There's one right down here on, on Linden, that everything was inside. Now it's outside, sitting in the front yard, right smack dab on the main street of town. And this is all because the owner said the other person owned it then, and it's not my responsibility, and I'm gonna sue him, and this could take months. And I would like to go down and present him a two hundred dollar ticket right now that says, you're the owner, I would like you to handle this within thirty days, or we're gonna move it and charge you for it.
Can we?
So?
Just appeal to the individual? Have you talked to the, the owner?
Many times.
What's the response?
This week. Well, he feels that he's pursuing a legal matter that could take months. And I'm not sure that the rest of the city can't expect him to comply to their wishes. You know, if you're gonna be a property owner, sometimes it costs you money. Costs every one of us money, but if we don't have any rules, then it's just, uh, like the movie Road Warrior.
You don't want to?
Does the, and landowner have authority over the contents out in the yard?
Well, if you own.
Who owns, who owns the furniture?
A former renter, I believe, or a former owner, I'm not sure of the exact. I think they were former owners.
I think any legal precedent would say that they were abandoned, and the homeowner can do with them as they see fit.
Yeah, he, it was sold under contract or something, and he got the contract back, and I, I couldn't begin to explain all the convoluted thick paths there. I only know that it's now stacked full of furniture and bookcases and other things right across from our recycle bin.
Fall festival's only two months away.
Yeah. So I, I am concerned. You know that I'm not a big government person. You know that about me. I'm not.
And other cities and towns have more stringent rules than what I've seen here.
And I don't think we're gonna, we're not trying to, as I told this guy and that man today alone. I said, wow, that's two hundred bucks, and they said, if you don't ask somebody for two hundred bucks, you don't even get them to blink an eye anymore. And then I got to thinking about it, we really don't want your two hundred dollars. We would just like to
Comply.
have you comply and possibly come to our way of thinking. As my dad used to say, be reasonable, do it my way.
Well, there's an argument, too, that the, the purpose of the hearing also gives that person an opportunity. Let's say they're just physically or financially not able to deal with the problem that has evolved. Then, then it gives them an opportunity to come before the council and ask for help.
Yeah. And I don't doubt that we could get a group of individuals to help them remove some of these things at no cost, if that was truly the issue.
Are you kind of worried that somebody will go around and knock on every door, writing tickets and shaking them down for money all the time, or?
My concern is general. Having government have the authority to dictate to people what they may or may not do with their own possessions.
Well.
How do you define a nuisance? It's a hard thing to do.
Well, a lot of stuff here, a nuisance is something that's either a danger, affects your neighbor, which we are neighbors here. Your property values, um, something that could cause harm to children, other people, so forth and so on, tho- those are all a nuisance. Um, I don't know, you've been walking around town before? How many out-of-towners come by, and do they say, oh, this town really looks nice? Or they say, oh boy, something else? Or, that, this looks good, but that doesn't over here? I mean, has anybody heard that? I have.
Many people would say that chickens are a nuisance.
They could be.
Yeah.
You could say, well, people, other, your neighbors are a nuisance, just being there. Just kidding.
Could be that.
But, I mean.
Are you looking people to agree with you on chickens?
No, I just cited as an example.
Okay.
For one person, it's a necessary item for his neighbor, it might be a nuisance.
This is, this is designed, I think, at least, my head's wrapped around this. For habitual, non-compliant, don't give a hoot about your neighbor, I'm gonna do what I'm gonna do. And to help with everybody.
Right.
And they, like it or not, we're, I wish we were living in the fifties, 'cause I heard they were really great, but we don't. And there, there's, far as the answer, the government, I am not a big government person either. I'm told as a wheat farmer what to do a lot, and what you can and cannot do. And, and, you know, as a society, we're not totally, not to be philosophical here, but we're not quite living in that age anymore, unfortunately. But I don't think it's, it's not the city, I haven't heard nobody, anybody here, um, this is just a guideline, even though these are in here. Hey, you should clean that up, or nah, turn a blind eye to it unless somebody complains. It's usually somebody complaining. Now, we have two people I knew on opposite ends of almost a town that are battling decrepit house, vehicles, and crud everywhere, and, and then animals over here on this end. And so what do you do? How do you solve that? You have to have some, some sort of structure, otherwise, and Jerry's, and the mayor, it's not their job to sit there and play refereeing, you know, nor is it law enforcement. They don't want nothing to do with that, generally.
I'd be more receptive to this effort if it included, uh, spraying of herbicides and other toxins. In my opinion, they're a nuisance.
Okay. Well, there are, I know as a pesticide holder, and when I had a public license, the WSDA, um, sent out a list, and I don't know, you'd have to contact them, if you're sensitive to them, or if they bother you, or you don't want it sprayed around, you get on that list, and it's the applicator's responsibility to know these people and read that list. If this person of this area doesn't want it, or these guys do, you know.
How can you avoid affecting a person with a spray?
That's true.
It's ridiculous.
It's why most farm insurance policies have a chemical drift coverage included in them.
Well, that's kind of funny you should say that, because all it'll take is a spray that field that's just across the road up here, one on the hill, by the golf course. You're, you're exposed to it too late. You're, you've already had that in your system, fortunately. But until we get enough money, we can turn everything to either concrete or asphalt.
Doesn't hurt ya.
Um. There are alternatives to that, different, different sorts of chemicals, the soy. Salt, I mentioned, I mean, that's for one that you could do, but if you're worried about weeds, uh, there's a lot of people that go to a lot of work keeping their yards, um, beautified. More power to them, that's great. I personally don't, you know, that's a lot of time and effort, and, and I love them. You know, that, that's, that's great, and, and they like to do it. Maybe, you know, but, um, they don't appreciate the, the weeds and the, um, seeds and stuff growing into their stuff, and so that would be constituted as a nuisance.
I admit I've got to read this more carefully than I have the.
Well, I don't think tonight we're gonna vote on this. That's not the purpose. The purpose is to move forward. And I think at the present time, if I can encourage this man to still pick it up and move forward, and if anybody wants to help him and get them all, get this to a little more refined to where we don't go through it and find so many things that glaringly reach out to all of us. So at this point, that's kind of where we're trying to head.
I would ask that council members on the back, write down your concerns, what they are. Like I have four of them written down here, and most of my, well, I've said all of them and then some tonight, but if you have some of those, they're valid, they're worth hearing from. I mean, this is not set in stone, and that's what we are doing as a group, is batting it around and coming up with that everybody can agree. And if the public has something to say, wanna hear it. Because in the end, this isn't just for us, it's for the, the whole city. I hope that helps, Peter, but.
I guess my position to it is global rather than.
Right, well, I, I was, from the onset of this, I was just trying to solve the infraction part of it. Because a lot of this ordinance and stuff was written back in eighty-nine, or, excuse me, ninety-three, I think, and then two thousand and eight, so before my time on council.
I do have one brief question. Uh, did you have a chance to read the two ordinances from the historical perspective, um, that this would replace three eighty-nine and?
Four sixty-two?
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it, it does, covers, um.
I know a lot of it's in there, I just, I guess where I was leading up to is, did either one of those historical ordinances address animals, chickens, goats, whatever in town?
Yes. Yes.
At least three eighty-nine did.
Okay, because this doesn't, so.
But we already have an ordinance about farm animals in the city.
We have a second one.
But however, we can't, there was an issue with that, and it was because we adopted, um, there was a conflict there, so.
Oh, did we put another ordinance on the table that kind of?
Allowed, allowed chickens, so we had to take that out.
Okay, okay. I just, like I said, I just noticed this didn't address what some people, what some people, not myself, but some people consider a nuisance, and I just thought.
I don't know, you could blanket it.
We were leaving that open to having, you know, pig pens, literally.
I think we have a clear farm animal.
Different ordinance, it's a farm animal, okay, that's all.
And it's like everything else, we don't enforce it.
Fair enough, I just wanted to.
I believe it somewhat falls into the zoning, zoning areas to, if I remember right.
With animals, yeah.
It's very specific, within, within the city limits. So, well, they've defined now what is rural and what's within the city limits.
My, my, I guess my point was, I wanted to make sure that we weren't getting rid of ordinances that address that in their entirety, and this doesn't do that, so I'm, I'm good with that.
When you mentioned archived or older ordinances, I thought you were talking about nineteen thirty-one or nineteen twenty. And there was no horse play, baseball playing, kids can play out in the street, and bucking horses, you'd get a five hundred dollar, or three hundred dollar fine. Rightfully so. Thank you, Mark, for that, that info.
I wonder what you're gonna do about the rats? The rats, they're probably inhabiting that nest on the street down by Third.
That, um.
Oh, rats?
Rats.
I didn't catch that part.
Well, back in the day, you'd turn loose a bunch of teenagers with twenty-two to go take care of it. But today you can't go do it.
We, we got plenty of, we've got plenty of feral cats, I think, to keep the rat away.
But, to answer, to address her question, I mean, if, you know, that place you mentioned earlier with the couches and all the
Right.
tho- those do, my experience many years ago was, that will bring them in.
Rodent infestation?
Yeah.
And that was my first education on what a rat looks like.
Mm-hmm.
A bunch of.
So, to the credit of the feral cats in this town. Just saying, when I moved into my house, it had not been lived in for five years, and it was one of those houses where the grass was four feet high. And I even found nests where clearly the deer and other things have been using that yard as, as a bedding.
Bedding ground.
Of course.
I will tell you the one thing, when I went through the house, it had not been occupied in five years, there was not a single dropping of evidence of any kind of rodent in there, ever. So.
Cats and snakes.
Cats and, well, thank God no snakes, but anyway, the cats did their job, so.
One for cats.
Is there any more to add to that? Okay.
Well, we resurrected this a month ago and moved forward. Is there any problem with moving forward more and refining this document? Maybe in another month, producing it again to the council? Does that sound reasonable?
Does to me.
I would be for that.
Not only reasonable, but mandatory.
And the council either writes zero input or just put input on it?
So if you want to meet with me, and we'll call David Bingham again and try to go for a second. That sounds great. Or if you want to do it yourself, call him.
We'll do it together, we'll get it.
Okay.
Thanks for your work on it, David.
Well, you're welcome.
You've devoted a lot of time to it, I know.
Yes, he did.
Kind of got the, you know.
How many hours did the attorney?
Well, I don't know, he didn't say, um.
We'll find out.
I don't think it would be real. Next time on the claims, we'll find out.
Uh, nuisance order's done, mayor's comments. It's been a fairly busy month with. It's been a fairly busy month with. Water leaks, trains. And other things, so that's moving forward now. This afternoon, I got a call back from the. Public health district, I hope I'm saying that correctly. The man I talked to, uh. Was a man by the name of Ed, uh, Ed Desi. And our samples tested okay, satisfactory. For what's called an SPI investigation, a special purpose investigation. Which is a test they do for you at a pretty reasonable price when you've done construction. I did not ask what they tested for, but they all came back. Satisfactory, which is what our water samples always do. So if there's any other types of testing that. Other than what the health district would normally test our water for. I have no problem with doing that either. So at the first round of tests after the construction. There was tests taken down at the socket place, right next, right below it. Uh, at well one and well three, test was taken both there, up at the park. And the blockhouse. Which is a cement blockhouse behind the school.
By the tennis courts, yeah.
Yeah, so up there after the, so, and those tests all passed at this point, so.
What did they test for?
I didn't, I didn't ask specifically for that, but he said there was no E. coli's in there.
Bacteria and stuff.
And I didn't, and this is the thing again, you know, you'd need a government report to find out, but. They ran, I can't tell you, Peter, it was called an SPI, a special investigative. Testing system, or. Series of tests they ran.
That's sort of a blanket term. Did they test for heart disease?
I do not know that. I don't know what that, I didn't ask him the specific tests. I know after you do mechanical work or any kind of construction, you have to run a set of tests. So, I can tell you that the five areas that water was drawn. Were what they considered. Uh, the term is, uh. They don't say good, better, they say satisfactory, as I told you. That's, every one of our tests comes back as satisfactory. So, I'm sure maybe a water test man could tell you more of what that, what that definition means.
Do you know whether Stephen Hardy's uh letter on water testing was shared with Ed Desi? Or however it's pronounced?
I, Scotty took those tests into Davenport, so I don't know that. His letter, his letter to.
To whom is it addressed, Stephen?
The council. It was to the council.
Okay, I can't, I can't answer that question, I do not know that, whether that was. I don't know, would Ed Desi be the one, would that group be the one that would do any other testing?
Antech would probably be the one.
One in Spokane?
Yeah.
For some reason, we don't, I don't see a bill from them anymore. And I used to, well, I used to in years past, so I don't know why they, I can only assume that who's managing our. Waste water treatment and potable water is not using that particular testing. What that means, I don't know. I guess it means they own their own lab.
So, uh, my understanding would be that the health department tests would be sufficient to. Say that there would be no boil order needed.
Okay.
Boil order is only going to address bacterial things that get killed by boiling.
Right.
Um, so I think that concern is 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 taken care of. The only one concern that I would continue to have interest in is any uh particular matter of VOCs. And that's what Scotty said, we could get tested at Annetec, Annetec. However, again, though, if if there are VOCs in the water, boiling would not affect it.
Wouldn't solve it?
As far as I'm understanding it, yeah, it's.
Is that a contaminant, a s- a filterable contaminant, or?
Yeah, yeah. Um, so, yeah, I think we're past the boil order concern now, with with those tests coming back positive, there would be no need to boil. Any water.
I can tell you that we had dirty water for one night. And. Being kind of a weirdo. The inside of our water closets are clean. Sorry, I guess that says who you're talking to. And the water that's coming through now is better. We, we have been boiling at my house. Not with my blessing, but. But I'm not in charge of the boiling water, so I don't, I've learned to. Zip my comments in some areas. So we have been boiling water at my house on a hourly basis. For what I don't know, and we'll leave that alone, right there. Since this has been recorded, and probably listened to. The water seems to be cleaner right now. The pitcher, we use a zero water. The water that came out of the tap was only like a hundred and eighty parts, and typically, it's been about over three hundred. Parts per million of whatever that is. And I know after it goes through the zero water, it's usually zero. So that charcoal filter filters all of those particles out. But the water's coming out cleaner, and I don't know why that would be any different.
If there was a break in the pipe, there would be abrasion or erosion that was going on with the pipe.
There could have been stuff filtering down through it for.
Things breaking off from the pipe itself, so I can very easily believe that we have cleaner water now than before it started, but.
Going through clean plastic.
Does that have anything to do with almost half a mile of new pipe that we put in? Almost a half a mile of new pipe those gentlemen laid and glued and.
If anybody has lots of time and a scope, I'd be very curious to run a scope up through that old pipe and see what's going on in there.
I would like to have the piece where it's leaking back.
Pull it out from under there?
Well, that could happen here, I hate. That might, that could be a very expensive piece of pipe. So, uh, so that part's, all I have is good to say at the present moment. It's over forty eight hours, we don't have any water leak, and our system is working, so my goal now. Full speed ahead on. Rounding people up, getting them pointed in the right directions, getting the permits, whatever it takes to poke that hole under the railroad tracks. So that we can take all of the pipe that we put in and unhook it and leave it. Till we get rid of it, and have a new pipe before the snow blows.
Mm-hmm.
Cause our pipe will not survive. For more than two and a half, three months here, so this has to happen. Not maybe, it has to happen in the next couple of months.
Yes.
You said our pipe will not survive?
No, it would not survive a winter.
Oh, winter.
Our PV PVC pipe above ground, I don't know even if we went and buried it all with two feet of dirt. I don't know that that, I don't know that that would make it survive for the winter, if everything else goes south on us.
As long as it wouldn't go stagnant, as long as there's water through it, but that.
You think it would not freeze?
If you kept a good flow through, a good weather.
Well, it depends how cold it is, too.
I mean, last winter, we had some substantially cold days, so my goal is to make sure that we get. This next part of the job done. That's just gotta happen, from my point of view. That we can't talk about it for months, or we just don't have the time. And we have several state people who are working very hard in our corner, including our county people. And other people are trying to help us acquire funds from different governmental. Agencies and monies that are out there that possibly we pay little to nothing, or don't have to pay anything. Because this is an emergency situation. So. That's the charge right now.
You had engineers working on a permanent fix?
Yes.
What firm?
DW is working with a person, I can't tell you exactly which one that is, that they worked with. Who have put lines under the railroad before, and he said this is right up their alley, no problem. No problem to them, seems like a big problem to you and I, when we start seeing excavation and equipment rolling in here. I was with the owners of the piece of property this morning, and they were wanting to know when we were gonna remove the gravel and start putting grass down. And I begged for their forgiveness, and I said, we're. Right now, you're looking at the finished grade, and we're gonna start excavating here, hopefully within two weeks, to make a big hole. So it's probably gonna be next year when you see new grass and.
Does the city own that, do they own any of that?
There's a pie, there's a pie-shaped piece, but it's on map sifter, and if you can determine from them and their auditor, who owns what.
Yeah.
That's a real job.
Cause I thought that, that where that hole is, is very close to what the city owned.
Yeah, there's a pie there.
It's a pie shape, I know, yeah. But but nobody's really complained or pushed, come to shove on that issue?
A couple have, a couple were unhappy that we put pipe on their their land without. Some.
Is the.
Home meeting about whether it was okay with them.
Is the intent that the permanent line would go through in the same location, or down where we've stubbed new line?
That part, that part I can't, oh no, you mean through the railroad grade?
Down or down by a slide, tree.
Oh, to move that way and have more than one location? That's, hasn't been hundred percent determined. With inner mountain, I got him to change his location, and his plan was to go right down Fifth. And then up Glover. But I don't think it matters to him. The other engineering group there, we could wind up with two pipes.
That would be the idea.
From both sides of town, because the biggest problem in this whole situation is. There's only one pipe that feeds our water tank. So the hundred and fifty thousand gallons it sets up by the golf course is fed by one line. That goes right up Main Street, under the tracks, and then down past the school. And when we shut that line off last Saturday night. If you lived on this side of the tracks, which I think is the best side, you had water. Because we're not fed by that line. If you lived up there, there was a possibility, we're not sure yet. And even Scotty's not sure how some people never lost water when we shut it off. So this town, it's not, it's not unheard of that the people's houses are fed by lines. That nobody's sure where they came from or where they're going.
Is there any help with that GIS mapping? Not much?
Not tonight, there's not. I would love somebody to try and contact them. I had very little success with that.
So, my point being is that we pay for a service and kind of.
And didn't get it.
They just took it home and do a bunch of stuff, here you go.
That, kinda what I think, right? That's another discussion. So, that pretty does it, pretty well does it for the mayor's updates. Uh, like I said, I would love for people to give feedback on dissemination of accurate information to everybody in town. And that could be real simple, but I don't see how we're gonna do that yet. Storage containers at some point, I think we need to address that issue. And I think that's it, and so now I'll open the floor to public comments. Chris?
I have a couple of comments. One is that, uh, in anticipation of this water shut off in a couple of weeks.
Oh, I hope not.
Well, you said you were gonna put in a permanent fix?
Yes, I hope that to be within a month or so.
Okay, the Nazarene Church with the food bank is gonna have two hundred cases of water available for people.
Okay.
In anticipation of that. And then the other part, when you were talking about your CEO and nuisance things, and. Every city, every channel that I've ever heard of, no matter how big it is, has always had some type of a nuisance thing going on. It's just, what is a nuisance? To some people it isn't, some people it is. This is not utopia, this is not, you know, hey, you know, streets of gold and so on. But when anything in anybody's yard or out on the street is detrimental to the person who lives next door to them. Then there needs to be something that happens. And whether it be somebody's got five dogs, which most places have a limit on the number of dogs you can have, or the number of cats. And, uh, or when there are weeds, again, but it looks bad coming into town, it looks bad in town. Cars, if they're not running, and they're not tabbed, shouldn't be on the street. They should be on the people's properties. That's theirs, let them take care of whatever, whatever it is, they should be taking care of it. And not violating the rights of other people in town. And if somebody would park their car next, you know, that wasn't running on the street next to me, I would be very upset. And some hot places, they even have it where if you don't move your car within thirty days, you have to move it.
Actually, here it's less than that.
So there, there, if you need help working on something like that, David, I would be more than happy, as a citizen. To, you know.
Put something and put into it?
Look around town and see what's really obnoxious, and I don't think chickens are obnoxious, I love chickens. And my neighbors have got them, and there's absolutely, they're clean, I don't hear them. There's nothing going on there, and they've got a cute little hutch that they, you know. That they have, and everything's clean and quiet, and they're taking care of it. But the weeds are killing my lawn from my neighbors. And I don't know what to do about it. The English thistle is horrendous, and all these weeds now, because it was dry. All this powdery stuff is coming over, and I don't have a glorious yard at all, it's, you know, a hundred years old, but it's hell.
Come by and I'll show you what to do. This is what I do for recreation in the afternoon.
Okay.
You won't like my plan, but that's what I do.
Recreation?
I.
Yeah.
What do you do?
I go around and I cut them weeds. I cut them off, boom, and then squirt a little drop of some stuff on them, and sometimes I just cut them off, cause I guarantee you. If I cut you off at the ground, it won't be long, and you will not get anything from what should be above the ground to feed you. And you as a root will die. But it becomes a, you know, it becomes a life. You know, if that's your life is cutting weeds off, then, and you enjoy that. You'll have no problem with my plan.
The English thistle in my yard was like five or six of them, a year afterwards, I'd go out and I'd pluck them and they, you know, I killed them off. But now I'm getting thirty or forty of them a day, they're coming in.
I agree.
I'm gonna have to tear up my lawn here pretty soon.
I am surrounded by.
Yes.
City lots owned by one person.
Yes.
Who has turned growing weeds into an art form.
Well, um, Troy did mow it one, well, he actually, he weed whacked it twice, and then he started to mow it the other day. I was talking to Jerry, and apparently something happened to the tractor, but I saw he was gonna go, it looked like he was gonna just go ahead and shovel it all off. And then we could get somebody in there to, you know, round up, do or whatever, except now my neighbor has planted irises in there. She doesn't take care of the lot, but she planted irises.
Outside the fence?
Yes, outside the fence, and you know.
Well, they're gonna get mowed off with the brush hog, just like all the three foot high brush did. No, I can tell you will.
Well, and I even told Jerry, if you could shovel that all off and weed, or, you know, grind it all up. And plant it in grass, I would be more than happy to take care of it, just because it looks so horrible, people coming into town.
Got it.
So that's my vote is.
Okay.
But I would be willing to help you, David, if there's some, you know, by even looking around town and seeing what are considered some nuisances. And do we have to be specific? Because we can look and see that some of the things that we have here in town. That are more than one person has, or maybe if it's really important, put it in, but then just leave that ordinance open. So if something happens later on, we can add to it.
I hear from, I hear from many citizens of their private, personal complaints.
Well, it's really hard to anticipate things that are gonna irritate you or be illegal, you know, ten years from now, but if the ordinance can be updated like what you guys are doing, maybe that.
Well, yes, it says public nuisance, so whatever, public. I, like, one neighbor might not like a barbecue out there, so that won't, that won't be a nuisance.
But we may not be able to anticipate would be a public nuisance, you know, five, ten years from now is what I'm saying. So it would be, you know, just what's happening now.
Anyone else?
Thanks, Chris.
I guess I have one further thing to bring up. Yesterday I was called. By the Lincoln County Sheriff. At about one o'clock.
AM or PM?
Huh?
AM or PM?
AM. PM. I was sitting right there, okay. I was sitting right there. And his personal secretary was there, this is the new sheriff. Who I had talked to a couple of weeks ago. And the questions I got was, is your town out of water? My answer was, no, it's not out of water. It's actually been twenty-four hours ago on Monday when it was hooked up and we were going. So then she wanted to know, when were you out of water? And I said that the water was turned off. At about four AM, five AM on Sunday morning, I believe it was.
Monday morning.
And Monday we were.
Sunday, wasn't it?
It was Sunday when we hooked it up, so Monday morning, we worked all day, yeah. We got up to four o'clock, that's right. So we turned it off Monday. And it was back on again at four o'clock in the afternoon, so it was off about twelve hours to maybe ten or twelve houses. The lower part of the town was still supplied by our small pump and the other pump was turned off. So at any rate. When you call the Washington State. Emergency Services number, you'll be asked where you live. And they will give you a number if you say you live in Harrington. And when you call that number for the Washington State Emergency Services, you will get the sheriff's office in Davenport. They are the.
Coordinator.
Coordinator for the state's emergency services. And they were called yesterday by Washington State. And told that they weren't taking care of Harrington, that several people in Harrington had called and said, we want water, we're out. And the sheriff said to me, so are you out of water? No, sir, we're not. We're not out of water. Yes, and I went through the whole thing and when they were off. And he gave me a couple of names which I'm not going to share. But we have to be careful when we call certain governmental agencies thinking that we're talking to somebody in Bolivia. You're actually talking to the, about the guy right over here, your next door neighbor who takes care of this for the state. And you have to make sure that you don't embellish any of the facts of what's going really on. So in other words. Make sure you tell them the exact truth because. He was less than thrilled with the fact that he was getting poked by the state. Somebody in Olympia called him. And I imagine he has his hands full over there right now being the interim sheriff. I believe he's the interim sheriff. I'm sure he's got. Plenty of things going on to keep his days busy at nights, so. So we have to be careful who we're calling and tell them that we're not getting taken care of. And I think it's wonderful that we have water and they said, you know. They were asked to have water brought to the city shops and I said, okay, we can store water. We're not going to bring you water there just to store in the event that you have a problem. If you're having a problem, you call and we'll get you water. And the state and the military, the governor's office, when I talked to them last week, said something similar. They wanted to send the military out here with huge trucks of water. And I said, we don't, we don't need huge trucks. If we need anything, it's help. Addressing the issue we have because not being engineers, we're not hundred percent educated on what to do. Now we've got engineers working on that for us, so. So we just have to be careful who we talk to and what we say to people. Like I say. Now, your, your name was not one of them.
Good.
I think that speaks to back what you were saying earlier about having a better mechanism for communicating to our citizens.
Yeah, could be, yes, that, absolutely. We need a way to, like I said, disseminate accurate information. This man has answered the phone, I can't tell you how many times, and last week, is the water on, is the water off? Can I water my lawn? Can I burp my hose? You know, just continuous. And why isn't the water on?
When you say the Washington Emergency Services Agency?
Yes.
Are you talking about WEMA, Washington Emergency Management Agency?
Well, I got on here one day and I can't tell you exactly who I talked to, Peter, but I started calling numbers, cause I was looking for help. And the last one I called, I got Lincoln County Sheriff and I knew the lady's voice, cause we had talked the week before about a situation going on in town. So when she called me yesterday, she said, I told the sheriff, I've got a guy here, a contact, which was me. Who I know will tell you the truth on what's going on. And, and he went from. An elevated temperature to pretty calm and we were laughing before it was done, so. But that's where you call. If you call for Washington State Emergency Services in Lincoln County, you're gonna get the Davenport Sheriff. And it goes to him. It doesn't go to somebody that answers the phone. He's the first guy that, he's got the red phone there. So. And it, and he was taking his, his, uh, his job seriously when he called me. So. Anything else from the audience? Anything else from the council?
Move to adjourn.
So we've got a motion on the floor. And a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?